Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled Hibbing City Council meeting of Wednesday, June 22, 2022, at 5:06. Let it be shown that all councils are present with the exceptions of Councilor Schreiberger and Mayor Kanata. Meeting called order. Item number two, add and delete, delete consent agenda number seven, add consent agenda number 15, add bids and quotes number one B, add license and permits number 10 and 11. Next up, approval minute. Approved from the previous meeting, the minutes of the regular Hibbing City Council meeting of May 18, 2022. Wish you the council.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fosso. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the, from the previous meeting, the minutes of the special Hibbing City Council meeting of May 25, 2022. Wish you the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support. Support by Councilor Jarenas. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Through the minutes of the regular Hibbing City Council meeting of June 1, 2022. Wish you the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Fosso.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Through the minutes of the Hibbing City Council workshop of June 1, 2022. Wish you the council.
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support by Councilor Fosso. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Excuse me. Next up, consent agenda. Number one. Approve the accounts payable dated 6/1/2022. Checks 1/7/2/395 in the amount of $35,152.23. 6/9/2022. Checks 1/7/2/396 through 1/7/2/466 in the amounts of $427,827.24. 6/16/2022. Checks 1/7/2/467 to 1/7/2/542 in the amount of $1,724,514.89. Number two. Approve the city payroll for period ending 6/3/2022. Checks 1/6/8/311 through 1/6/8/316. The amount of $545,796.56. Number three. Approve the updated job description for the human resources director job description. Four. Authorize recruitment for a library manager at grade 14 of the base pay structure as stated in the job classification and compensation policy. Five. Improve the new city services position of, I'm sorry. Approve the new city services position of marketing and communications manager and request approval to advertise, interview, and hire for this position. Six. Approve the, approve putting the recreational program and city services secretary positions on hold. Eight. Authorize the city administrator to sign and execute the professional service agreement between the city Hibbing and Marsh McLennan Agency. Nine. Authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the application of Chell's Company for the Android Apartments to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency Multi-Family Consolidated RFP. Ten. Acknowledge proclamation recognized on October 15 as an action National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Eleven. Approve the 2022 election judges. Twelve. Authorize the election judge pay to be $10.50 for election judges and $11 for head election judges for the 2022 elections. Thirteen. Set the next regulars meeting for Wednesday, July 6, 2022, 5:00 p.m. at City Hall Council Chambers. Fourteen. Set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, July 6, 2022, following the city council meeting. Yeah. Council meeting in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. Fifteen. Authorize the parking light animal control positions PBA pay increase to $20 per hour and increase their weekly hours from 20 hours per week to 30 hours per week. Wish you the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support. Support by Councilor Jarenas. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes. Mr. Brudzinski.
Mr. Mayor City Council, on item number three, approve the updated job description for the human resources director. I omitted and recruit for that role. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do I need to amend my motion then, or?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Just informational.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to abstain from item number one for the accounts, approve accounts payable dated June 9, 2022, for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, public forum. Let it be known, you'll have five minutes to state your position, and there'll be no action taken by the council as far as your, your request. First up, Phyllis Ryan, in reference to the alliance sign, please step up to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Oh, 4120 Second Avenue West. It's right across from the church.
Thank you.
And I have a good relationship with them, even if I don't happen to be a member. What I'm concerned about, the new sign that they're considering putting up, is the frequency of the changing of the sign. This morning, I was up walking at about 6:15, and there were six cars coming and going. And I think changing every six seconds or something is a little distracting. And also, a personal thing, I walk to be out in nature, and I don't, when I return, I don't want to be seen. And all, there were six cars this morning in that little space between the church and the credit union. And then at about 3 o'clock, we happened to be in that area, and it was again about six air, six cars. So I think for safety's sake, it, frequency and changing could be a safety issue. Then the other thing, I guess I already mentioned, more or less, is the tranquility. And when I think of a church, I think of tranquility and also a little bit lightheartedness, but thank you for letting me make my view.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Next up will be April Fowden, reference library manager position. Name and address, please.
Hi. Good, good evening, honorable council members.
State your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is April Fowden. My address is 120 Northeast Fourth Avenue, Chisholm.
Thank you.
I currently work at the Hibbing Public Library as the library specialist. And I just wanted to, I looked in the packet like Monday, and I seen that the library manager position was in there to be for action and approval. So I just have a couple questions and concerns, I guess. I just wanted to say that this is a newly created position. In the top of the packet, it states this position has been vacant since April 15, 2016. For clarification, the library director position has been vacant since April 15, 2016. I did some research, and for library managers, library managers are for branch libraries. Now, we're not a branch library. I'm going to use Duluth as a, oh, what else is it? Example. Yes. They are, they have different branches and libraries in the Duluth area, and they do have library managers, library supervisors, et cetera. We are a population of 16,000 here, and we are a statutory city. Correct. And in our ordinance, number 167, section 2.16, it outlines that we do need a library board. And we, in that library board, a library director oversees the library, and it also works right along with the library board. And we have, and as you guys know, we haven't had a library board for probably seven years or so. So I guess what I would like to bring forward is, I would like you guys to table this decision, if possible, and look into job descriptions that would fit our library. And currently, as you know, we do have a library lead worker who does supervise, he does manage, and he does do director's duties. But he is in our union, ASME union, and he is not in the MAPS union, so he cannot give us disciplinary action that takes place with the city administrator and HR. Now, our lead, I also want to let all of you know, because some of you might not know or are new, the lead worker was promised when, six years ago, when he was hired from the previous administrator, that if he got his master's degree in library science, that he would be able to move up in the ranks and get the library director's position. So he went to school, and he paid for his own schooling, and he got his master's degree in library science in December of 2021. As of right now, he has not been appro, as far from my understanding, he hasn't been approached to move forward into a library director's position or excel in that position. And I also wanted to make that known, too. And also, I feel this job description, I think whoever wrote it, yes, they, they tried to figure out exactly what they needed, but not from a library standpoint. I feel that we need to look more into the, if you were going to post for a supervisor or a library director, we need to do the proper steps in doing that. And consulting with the American Library Association is a great place to start, and the Arrowhead Library System is also another great place to start. And I guess my question is, what would you, why would we need also another manager if we have a manager? And we need, I feel that we need a library director, somebody with that schooling, the master's degree, that has that potential. And I'm very passionate about libraries, as you guys know. I, I truly love them, and I'm so glad to be able to come back to work. So, thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for input. Next up, Department Committee reports. Number one, I believe this will be Mr. Brudzinski. Conditional use permit to request the Hibbing Alliance Church to allow a 5-by-8 electronic changeable sign with conditions listed.
Mayor City Council, yes, this comes from our planning commission. Ms. Ryan had mentioned it earlier in the open forum. It is approval of the conditional use permit requesting Hibbing Alliance Church to allow a 5-by-8 foot electronic terrible sign with the conditions listed. And the two conditions that they did address included, number one, being able to turn the brightness up and down, which I think would probably help in that neighborhood. And then number two, and Ms. Ryan, I think you had mentioned this one, that is the length of time that each slide is, is up on the board. That is one of the conditions. A minimum of 30 seconds is what they are recommending as part of the conditional use permit. So I hope that addresses your issue that you had, but they are looking for approval of that CUP, so I can certainly stand for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Brudzinski. Do you have a question, Ms. Ryan? Please step up to the podium if you do. I'm representing the church, that's all. Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Dan. That's right. Step up to the podium.
Okay. I would recommend 15 minutes instead of, what was it, six seconds?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I know. That's my view.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me state my view.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Wish you the council.
It would be something the church and neighbors could talk over?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm, I'm sure there'd be an amiable, solved with this whole thing, so. And again, the brightness and the length of time are all adjustable, so I'm sure we can come to an agreement on it. Okay? Motion approved. Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fosso. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion carries. Next up, City Clerk Treasurer Sheena Mollner. Offer resolution number 220602, authorize execution agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transit service.
Thank you, Mayor. On item A, I'm offering resolution 22-06-02, which would authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transit services. This is a requirement for our grant that we do every year with MinDOT. The application is currently open, and we need to submit that in July of 2022. The city would be responsible for up to 20% of transit costs. This is the same as previous years. I'm looking for council to approve the resolution.
Wish you the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fosso. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item B, offer resolution 22-06-03, approving the establishment of absentee ballot board for the 2022 primary and general elections. Ms. Mollner.
Thank you. So on item B, this is offer resolution 22-06-03. This is a requirement by state statute for elections, that if we administer the absentee process, that we need a resolution that would establish, allow us to establish an absentee board. I'm asking for council approval of resolution 22-06-03.
Wish you the council. Make that motion. Motion by Councilor Jarenas. Support by Councilor Bayless. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mollner. Next up, City Administrator Greg Brudzinski. City Administrator's report. Greg.
Mr. Mayor City Council, this is actually from our last workshop. We had a fairly long conversation about addressing the blight in, within the city. And there are actually two pieces to it. The expansion of the enforcement area, and then we also talked a little bit about expansion of the hours that we dedicate our staff time to. And Andy's going to have a proposed amendment to expand the enforcement area, and then internally, we just took action on expanding the staff time part of it. So, want to report that to the city council, number one. Also, let our, our residents know what's going on, and that we're trying to address those issues, and then maybe I'll just turn it over to Andy for some additional.
Mayor, Mr. Council, I'm going to ask if Mr. Story could pass this around to the council members who are present. So Chief SD had contacted me about trying to tweak after the last couple of working sessions, the ordinances involving the blight. And so this is what the updated ordinance would look like. Primarily, the area is, the discussion is about describing a PBA enforcement area. It's not necessarily included with this particular ordinance, but I believe I can share what he, essentially is trying to expand it into certain other, the platted areas and areas that are more developed within the area. So rather than, say, the urban residential as the previous, as the current ordinance says, it now says the PBA enforcement area. The only discussion we really had was where that map should be. The consensus was, it's probably best at the building office, because that's where our other maps are, and the chief was good with that. So I think I'm going to ask Pat, when he's back in, to share what that area would look like to all of you. So, when we modify ordinances, we need to publish or post them 10 days before we actually adopt them. So I'm giving it to you, the ones that are present tonight, for you to look at. If you have questions or concerns about it, please contact me. If we were going to have it for the sixth meeting, I think we'd actually have to get it to the paper tomorrow to get it posted by Sunday. Otherwise, taking it up either on the 6th or the 20th of July would be, per the chief's request, to try and get this moving ahead. So it's for you for information this evening as to how it's tweaked. But the primary areas are, that urban residential has been removed, and PBA enforcement area has been enclosed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borland. I've seen the proposal, and it looks pretty good. It actually makes it a lot less convoluted. Too many niches and nooks and crannies, and last, and I mean, it was impossible for anybody to really know, especially the citizens, who was within that area and who wasn't. So this'll define that a lot better, a lot easier. It's square corners. It's very nicely done, I think. So if you have any questions or anything, concerns about the ordinance change, contact Mr. Borland. All right? Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brudzinski?
Oh, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, bids and quotes. Number one, City Services Director Nickarola. Approve moving forward with the Mindview Building Project with construction estimate at $2,602,500.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, tonight, I am here to ask for your permission to move forward with construction documents and bidding the Mindview Construction Project, getting those two buildings constructed up there. Included in your packet is the latest estimate from SCH, along with their timeline and recommended windows of when we would bid, and then eventually go to construction. So with that, I just ask for your approval and move forward.
Hold on, please. I don't know what that is, but.
A little buzzing.
We're getting some buzzing.
We can continue. Yeah. All right. Wish you the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support. Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Row. I know it's been a lot of work, and it's been a while trying to get it to move forward, and a lot of glitches, and a lot of changes, and all those things. I appreciate your hard work.
Yep, exactly. Hopefully, we see the light at the end of the tunnel and get some progress going.
Yeah, sure would be nice. It's going to be a nice, nice facility when we get done. Next up, approve the rebuild of the clerk's office AC condenser unit for the Iron Range Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $4,926. Mr. Rowland.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This one is a late addition to you. This one popped up just this last week. We have two air conditioning units that service the clerk's office, and one of those has, has gone down, and we are looking to rebuild that one with a new compressor and get it operational for them. I know they had to battle the, the heat the last few days, but they do have the compressor on hand, so we can get that in as soon as possible. So looking for approval to award that to Iron Range Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $4,926.
Thank you. Wish you the council. Motion. Motion by Councilor Jarenas. Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What is the warranty on our rebuild of a unit like that?
There isn't a warranty on, on the total unit, because it is an old unit. It is a, a unit that uses the old R22 freon. If it didn't have that, you know, we'd just swap out condensers and, and go with it. But since it is an old R22 unit, we are, we are just doing the compressor to, to get us by for hopefully a few years until we have a solution to the whole HVAC system, and we can redo a lot more things at that time, so.
Great. Makes good sense, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, thank you, Mr. Row. City Engineer Jesse Story. Approve the purchase of caster wheels for the snow attachment for the McQueen Equipment in the amount of $6,740.17.
Mayor Council, attached is a quote from McQueen Equipment for casters for a snowgo attachment. These, they have, they're steel wheels that go, they sit right underneath the engine of the snowgo. They're greasable. We have maintained them. They're just pretty much wore out. This is a 2014 snowgo, I believe. So we did get a quote from McQueen Equipment. We're trying to prepare for the upcoming snow season. The price for these casters is $6,740.17, which seems really high. It is, but that's the only place we can get parts. That's the only part we can put in there, so I'm asking for council approval.
Thank you. Wish you the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fosso.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Next up, library lead worker Ty. Approve the air handler steam coil from Bob Akamovich Mechanical Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $8,980. Ty.
Evening, Council. So our steam coil and our air handler has gone kaput. So in preparation for fall, when things are going to start cooling off, I'd like to get another steam coil to replace that, so we can control the temperature in the building.
Okay. Wish you the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fosso. Any other discussion? I guess we have to have it. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next up, approve the purchase installation of Plexiglas guard for mezzanine railing for the Northern Lights in the amount of $4,280.40. Ty.
So on our second floor mezzanine, you'll notice there's a railing there, and it's got these balusters that are pretty far apart. Just in the sake of safety and to avoid any potential accidents, I'd like to install some Plexiglas to stop people from slipping through that railing and potentially falling. So this is a, we've talked about several different solutions on how to address this problem, anywhere from welding new brackets in-house to possibly removing the railings and reinstalling it. It was, we spoke about it with Public Works, and they thought that by removing those brackets, it might actually wreck the concrete that they're drilled into. So the next best step was to go with the Plexiguard. And I feel like this is actually a fairly reasonable price for Plexig, given the times we live in.
Thank you. Wish you the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support. Support by Councilor Bayless. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Polken.
Thank you, Council.
Next up, license and permits. Number one, approve the raffle request permit application for the United Way of Northeastern Minnesota to hold a raffle on Wednesday, August 17, 2022, at the Salva Country Club. Wish you the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Fosso.
Support.
Support by Councilor Jarenas. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Two, approve the temporary liquor license of Boomtown Brewery and Woodfire Girl to dispense alcohol on her patio during the Hibbing Street Dance on Saturday, July 9, 2022, in downtown Hibbing. Wish you the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Three, approve the temporary liquor license of Mr. Nix to dispense alcohol on the sidewalk of Mr. Nix during the Hibbing Street Dance on Saturday, July 9, 2022, in downtown Hibbing. in downtown Hibbing, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Four, approve the on sale liquor and Sunday liquor lights of Andrew Hattigan, the Dewu LLC, two fourteen East Howard Street, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Number five, approve the two A.M. liquor license of the Dewu LLC, two fourteen East Howard Street, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Six, approve the special event permit application for the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to host sidewalk sales on Friday, July eighth, twenty twenty-two on Howard Street, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sakman?
Support.
Support by Counselor Drenas, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Seven, approve the special event permit application for the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to host the Hibbing Jubilee Grand Parade on Saturday, July ninth, twenty twenty-two on First Nav, excuse me, on First Avenue and Howard Street, wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless, support by Counselor Hoffman-Sakman?
No, uh.
I'm sorry. Counselor Drenas, I'm sorry. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Eight, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to host the Hibbing Jubilee Festival on Fifth and Kids Carnival on Saturday, July ninth, twenty twenty-two in between the library and City Hall, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sakman?
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Number nine, approve the special event permit application of the City of Hibbing to host the Hibbing, Hibbing Street Dance on Saturday, July ninth, in downtown Hibbing, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Ten, approve the special event permit application of Mind the Pave Revisited to host their event on Friday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and Saturday, August twenty twenty twenty-two in Bennett Park, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sakman?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Eleven, approve the temporary liquor license of Bar Savers Lutheran Church to dispense alcohol at the church on Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Fossil?
Support.
Support by Counselor Drenas, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. I need a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, we're adjourned.